About three minutes, and then at the fifteen minute mark, I would say you've, you've, you know, you've arrived at the time, and then you can keep talking and going as long as you want, but then you'll at least know where you are in the process.
So you're going to interrupt her speaking?
Yeah, and again, we don't have to stop the process. I'll just say three minutes, and then I'll say time, and just keep going.
Great.
It's just for your benefit, so that you
Don't lose track.
Don't lose track of time, and then say, oh my gosh, I don't have any time left.
Thank you so much. Next item is presentation by AFSMI. If you're ready, please proceed.
Yes, what we presented to y'all was a, in the, what y'all had asked for was a new pay scale, getting our people up to our surrounding counties and competitive, and what we have to go to in the fifteen, you know, got to get to the fifteen dollar minimum, so y'all could see what it is, what it's going to take to get there. As you know, like, we're in our surrounding county, we're kind of, we're below, we're in the middle, we're kind of, just depending on the category we're in. You know, since we, in October, whatever, there's been some new money added that's come to our y'all's side now, that will be paid for through Schoolway Cafe. So that's some new money that we got, that's going to be added to the funds. And we're just trying to get our people up to poverty level, because right now, if it's a one person, if they have no children, poverty level, we know, is at thirteen thousand five hundred. If we went to the pay scale that I presented to you, our people in Schoolway Cafe would still be four thousand dollars below poverty level. So that's what, you know, we're trying to get our people a little bit above. Then right now, they're making about seventy, eight hundred dollars out of, is the average of a Schoolway Cafe person, because they're only four hours a day.
I also want to bring to attention, first of all, thank you for this opportunity to, to speak to the board. We are amply represented by Kathy Knowles and Will DeRozier, President and Vice President of Local 850, but they want me to mention a couple of other items. One, we all know inflation and how it's hit us. It's now at, the last CPI that came out was seven point five, and we need help. The problem is, as employees, the only place we can come to help is to you, our employer. One of the items that we need you to look at is compare yourselves, what you're paying your employees, to the surrounding school districts here in, surrounding Volusia County. For example, bus drivers, you start them at thirteen dollars an hour, flagler at fifteen, seminar at sixteen fifty-three. Mechanics, you guys start them at fourteen thirty-four. This is experienced, certified mechanics. You start them at fourteen thirty-four, seminar starts them at twenty dollars. Food service managers, you start them at seventeen dollars, flagler at nineteen eighty-seven, and seminar at twenty-six thirty-five. Bus attendants, you start them at ten twenty-four, seminar starts them at twelve seventy-nine. Volusia County is one of the lowest-paid counties in the area. You have in each one of your departments, each one, whether it be maintenance, mechanics, bus drivers, attendants, food service, you have vacancies. You can't fill, you cannot attract people, okay? We need you to take that into consideration in your debates concerning increases. And this deeply affects the welfare of the public. You have to have enough employees, sufficient employees, in your different categories in our bargaining unit. You need to feed them, so you need enough people in the cafe, the Schoolway Cafes. You need to transport them, you need enough bus drivers and attendants, you need the buses running, you need the schools' air-conditioned fix, plumbing fixed. Folks, it's in the interest and welfare of the public that you are able to attract employees to get the job done. I always heard that, well, I was always told, that maintenance, it's cheaper to maintain something than to repair something, okay? So you, one of the things you got to look at is your maintenance department. Availability of funds, Kathy touched this. I'm going to suggest two, two or three things where you have the funds in your budget, okay? One is new, completely new. I don't know if this has met, or reached your budget workshops or whatever, but Schoolway Cafe used to pay a percentage to the general fund in terms of storage and receipt of the boxes and materials that they need to prepare lunches. That went, as of January first, that went to a two-dollar, Schoolway Cafe now pays two dollars per box to your general fund. Right now, something new, you're getting, Schoolway Cafe owes you for January and February, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, over a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, just for two months. So that's about a million dollars extra of new revenue that your general fund is about to receive. Another thing, we took a look at your budget, and you're scheduled to buy, you buy buses every year, and that's fine, and we thank you for that. But you scheduled, I think it was, two million point two, two point two million dollars for buses last year, two point three for this year, two point something for next year. If you reduce, we're not asking you to stop buying new buses, but if you reduce the purchase of buses per year, by five, that means, instead of buying twenty-three to twenty-five buses, you buy seventeen to twenty buses. That's half a million dollars. Half a million dollars of recurring money that you will have right there, that you could use for wages, okay? That's just two areas that we've identified. We know that you got some ARP money, and that's not reoccurring money. We know you used forty-six million dollars of it last year for, to, for budget holes, and we're glad that you had that money for that, but you still have some ARP money there. We know that you took a hit in your half a cent sales tax when the pandemic started, but since June of 2020, that money has been returning and climbing. So the money is there, folks, and your workers, your employees need it. And you need these employees to meet your responsibilities to the parents and the community. That, that is basically it. You have before you our proposal in terms of, of, of our new pay scale. We have, minimum wage goes up September twenty-eighth this year to twenty-eight, eight twenty, eleven dollars per hour for everybody, whether you're a private, public employee. It goes up to fifteen dollars in 2026. We need you to stay ahead of the curve, because you have to attract good employees. We don't want you attracting bad employees. Right now, your bus drivers are doing two and three runs a day, routes a day. I mean, there's work there, and you need the employees. Everybody is overworked. So we ask you to please, in determining, and in your deliberations concerning the increases for your employees, help us retain workers and attract new workers. Anything else?
And I would also just like to mention, you know, since the pandemic has started, this group of folks never once come up here and complained of anything that was asked of us to do. We also, the bus drivers got on the buses, they delivered the food. The Schoolway Cafe employees got in the kitchens and bagged the foods. We never once come up here and complained to y'all about how it was done, and I just ask y'all to keep that in consideration of what these people did for y'all and did for our children.
And I'd like to also mention, the maintenance department serviced all the air conditioning during this pandemic, didn't get any PPE that was special just for that task. You know, you name it, we participated, we did our job. And, you know, there's a lot of people that could use more, you know, help. Thank you.
With that, we reserve whatever time left over for
You spent nine minutes and one second.
Thank you, sir.
Pass off. All right, Mr. Dorn, we are ready.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you for having us here today to talk about this very important issue. As I mentioned, I'm Sasha Dice, and I'm here representing the school district to explain our position through this impasse process. And I have prepared a presentation for you all, hopefully you can see it, and I'm going to go through that today. So I want to talk you through a little bit about how we got here, in terms of what the collective bargaining procedure looks like here, not only in Volusia County, but is required in the state of Florida, to talk about the disputed issue here at impasse. I want to talk about the prior contract that was at issue, as well as the chronology of negotiations, and what the school board's goals have been throughout this, throughout these negotiations. And then I want to talk some about the union's proposal that you have received a written copy of, and what our recommendations are here today. So first, starting with the collective bargaining procedure. So the Public Employee Relations Act is why we're here today. It provides that the chief executive officer, or his or her designee, of the public employer and the bargaining agent of the public employees are obligated to meet and bargain in good faith. And so here, we have the chief executive officer being the superintendent, and the bargaining agent being the ably represented AFSMI representatives. And so the chief executive officer, of course, is the superintendent who's responsible to you all as the legislative body, being the school board, as part of this process. So this act requires that collective bargaining is done between the chief executive officer, or the designee, and the union. Now, in order to do that, the chief executive officer consults with you all through that process, both prior to and during bargaining, to be able to represent the board's views at the table. And so that was the purpose of the meetings that occurred in executive session throughout the bargaining process that we had that brings us here today, both prior to and during the negotiations for this contract for the 2122 fiscal year. And the purpose of that was to obtain the school board's views, obtain the goals, and formulate the board's position that carried through throughout the bargaining sessions. As contemplated by the statute, the school board's role is to provide that direction in those executive sessions in terms of collective bargaining. And once an agreement is reached, then there is a ratification process, you're all familiar with as well, both by the union and the school board. Of course, if the agreement is not ratified by the union, that's what brings us here today. And as your attorney so eloquently explained at the beginning of this process, there's a declaration of impasse, and it's ultimately your responsibility here today as part of an impartial quasi-judicial proceeding to resolve the dispute and take such action as you deem in the public interest to resolve these disputed issues. And so those, the disputed issues are those that are at impasse, that are the mandatory subjects of bargaining. And after this proceeding, as your attorney explained, will enter into a written agreement that includes both what you've imposed today, as well as the tentatively agreed-to proposals that are not at dispute resolution. So today, what you have, this is the issue, the salary schedule. There's one issue for resolution. The union rejected a contract with the agreed-upon salary schedule, and identified that that salary schedule is the sole reason that the contract was rejected. So where were we? This is the prior contract that was in effect through June thirtieth, 2021, that started in terms of the step levels. It had eight different categories of employees under the salary schedule, starting at a level one, step one, of ten dollars and eleven cents. And on this schedule, going up through level six, step forty, which was thirty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. There were also two other schedules that were part of your agreement for the Schoolway Cafe. This include three levels of Schoolway Cafe assistants that started at a starting salary of ten dollars and ended at step forty of twenty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. And then you have the Schoolway Cafe managers, which are divided based on the size and type of the school, starting at fourteen dollars and seventy cents, and going through thirty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. So that contract is the contract that expired on June thirtieth, 2021. Pursued to the union's request, bargaining for the new agreement began on August tenth, 2021. And prior to bargaining, of course, there was the meeting in executive session to obtain the school board's goals for that collective bargaining for this contract. And so those school board goals were established to ensure an eleven dollar per hour minimum for all AFSMI employees, as well as a, ensure all employees receive a minimum of a two percent salary increase. And so the cost to establish those goals was a little over one point two million dollars. Those goals were based in part on vacancy data and the needs of the district. As you may recall, the paraprofessionals, that are part of the VIEW Support Unit, had substantial vacancies. These vacancies do not exist for bus drivers and attendants. What a paraprofessional pay under the VIEW Support that's been ratified is twelve dollars an hour, and the bus attendant, as part of the agreed-upon proposal, is eleven dollars per hour. And so this, this is also part of the materials that we submitted, and it shows the vacancy data with the bus operators, as of February 2022, showing zero vacancies. And that's in part because of the, the ability, I'm sorry.
Order, thank you.
To be able to optimize certain bus routes to, to allow for that. And then you look at the paraprofessional vacancies, which are, of course, are substantially more than what you have in bus operator and bus attendant data. So collective bargaining began on August tenth, 2021, and the district on that date provided its first proposal, which is a one percent cost of living increase to those that didn't receive the minimum wage increase, as well as all other incentives remaining in place. This includes insurance, differentials, the interim program, longevity pay, the career ladder, attendance bonuses, vehicle mechanic certification, and out-of-class pay. The union countered that proposal with a, across the, with an average raise of four percent, as well as a differential for facility maintenance technicians. So you'll notice that that's, that was the union's initial proposal, and it's vastly different than what you have seen today in the materials, where they indicate they want a seven point five percent increase. That was never even asked for at the table in these collective bargaining negotiations. So the district countered that proposal of a four percent raise, with all employees receiving eleven dollars per hour, so everyone being brought up to eleven dollars per hour, as well as a one percent cost of living increase. It added a specific differential for the managers, and all other pay proposals remained the same. The union countered again with, with its four percent proposal, and then requested a differential as it related to custodians. So the district provided another counterproposal on September thirtieth, 2021. Again, the proposal that time was eleven dollars per hour, and a one-step increment that was an average of a two percent raise. So on October eighth, the union accepted that wage proposal of eleven dollars per hour in a one-step increment, and negotiations continued regarding other aspects of the salary proposal. The district provided a counterproposal on October eighth, and again, the, the wage proposal of eleven dollars an hour of starting pay, and the one-step increment for the average of a two percent raise, as well as accepting the union's changes to longevity proposal, eliminating career ladder program except for Sideway Cafe managers, and accepting the union's changes regarding an incentive that they had requested for facility maintenance technicians. So the union, through negotiations, asked the district what its bottom-line total spend was for this salary schedule, and the district, in fact, provided that. As a result, the union provided a counter on October fourteenth, 2021. Again, the same wage proposal that they had agreed to in the previous three sessions, with eleven dollars an hour starting pay and one step, and a one-step increment. But this time on October fourteenth, they provided a wage schedule. And this schedule, they took the bottom-line dollar and divided it, how the union wanted it, divided among the different steps and among the different positions in that, and presented that wage schedule. And this is the wage schedule that we're here today on. This is the, the union's proposed wage schedule. Now, for the, the levels, you noticed before, it had eight levels in the contract. The union requested to condense that down to six, and so those are here, with a starting pay of eleven dollars per hour, and, and, and ending pay, the maximum amount of pay for a level five, was thirty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. And then there are two other schedules. This is for the, the cafe assistants. The union requested to add an assistant level four, so that wasn't in the original contract. So that's what appeared on their salary schedule, and then, as well as this proposal as it related to the managers for these individuals. So the district accepted the union's proposed salary schedule. They added a differential, and they accepted the union's change to longevity pay, the career ladder program, and incentive for the facilities maintenance technicians. So as of October fourteenth, 2021, the union and the district tentatively agreed on the entire contract, including the wage article. So then it came, because there was a tentative agreement, came to the union's vote. So the union held a ratification vote on the proposed contract. There are one thousand forty-four members of the bargaining unit. Three hundred of those members voted. One hundred of those members voted to ratify the contract, and two hundred members voted not to ratify the contract. So what that represents is there is a nineteen, about a nineteen percent of the bargaining unit members have voted to reject the contract. And that's what we're here today on the impasse process, because the district had extended its full authority on wages. It accomplished the goals that were set for this, by this board for collective bargaining in terms of the eleven dollars an hour and the two percent raise. And the proposed contract accurately represents the board's position on those issues. And now, today, the union is asserting that they want a seven point five percent raise, and there, there isn't any justification that's been provided for such a significant increase. But more importantly, the proposal before you doesn't represent a seven point five percent increase, and I'm going to go through that. It is much greater than seven point five percent. So this is a schedule of the varying, where we are. So the fiscal year 2020 is what's provided here, so that's the old contract. Then we have the T-Aid contract and what the union's providing. So if we look at level one, step one, in the contract that just expired in June of 2021, the pay was ten dollars and eleven cents. The amount agreed between the union and the district would be eleven dollars for that position. And now the union is coming before you, asking for fifteen dollars an hour for that position. And if you look at the, the, under this schedule, the greatest amount, so if you look at level five, step forty, under the current, the expired contract, it was thirty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. Under the agreement with the union, it was thirty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. And now, under the union's proposal today, it's forty-seven dollars and four cents. So it's another ten dollars per hour on that end that they're asking for. And then if you look at the cafe assistants, you have, in 2020, the expired contract, they were at ten dollars an hour. Under the agreed-upon contract, they would move to eleven, and now under the union's proposal, they're moving to thirteen dollars an hour. And then, again, if you look at the, the managers, the cafe managers, you have at step one, with the elementary school, you have the, the expired amount is fourteen dollars and seventy cents. You move to what the agreed-upon amount was, which was fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents. But now, before you today, the union is requesting eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents for that position. And so what this, what this accounts to, when you look at the percentage increase, is when you're looking at the six levels under the AFSMI contract, you have percentage increases ranging on the low end from a twenty-seven percent raise to the high end of a forty-eight percent raise in the union's proposal. On the, the assistants, you have the percentage increase going from a thirty percent raise to a forty-two percent raise on those assistants. And then with the managers, you have the, the varying amount of a twenty-three percent raise to a twenty-seven percent raise. So we're not talking about a seven point five percent cost of living adjustment. We're not talking about an inflation amount. These amounts are, are substantial increases that they are seeking before you today, and certainly nothing that was brought to, to the table. So the board is charged with resolving this dispute in the public interest, and we believe the district's proposal is in the public interest, including the interest of the public employees in this bargaining unit. Only nineteen percent of the employees in this bargaining unit voted to reject the, the agreed-upon contract. The union proposed the salary schedule. It was agreed to by the district, and it is in the public's interest to adopt the agreed-upon proposal. Certainly, the proposal, which has salary increases upwards of thirty and forty percent, would have impacts not only on every other bargaining unit member, but every other employee you have within the district, in terms of creating compression issues. You have the paraprofessionals, who have a ratified contract of starting pay of twelve dollars an hour, but the bus attendants, under this, this proposal by the union, would be fifteen dollars an hour. And so it creates compression issues outside of the bargaining unit here. And the union hasn't provided any justification. They've listed in, in their proposal that there's been increase in funds. Non-recurring funds can't be used for salary purposes, and that's what the examples that they've provided for you. The district's proposal, which was agreed to at the table by the union, is fair, reasonable, and competitive. It promotes an efficient and effective use of resources. It promotes sound financial stewardship, and it, and the proposal provides a significant and meaningful wage increase. Moving to eleven dollars an hour as a starting pay results in more than a seven point five percent increase for those employees in that position. So what our recommendation here today is to bring closure to this contract process and adopt the wage proposal previously agreed to by the union and the district. And specifically, we would recommend and request that the following motion be made, that the superintendent's recommendation to resolve the disputed issue of salary schedule be adopted by the school board, as previously agreed to by the union and the district, and as fully set forth below on the schedules, and take effect on the date of this hearing in accordance with the requirements of Florida Statute Section 447.403. And then we have provided, this is the agreed-upon salary schedule that was in the tentatively agreed-to contract, and that was put to the vote by the union. And that concludes our presentation today.
Thank you so much. All right, we will take a ten-minute
Eighteen minutes.
Eighteen minutes. We'll take a ten-minute break, and we'll return with rebuttal. 18 minutes, we'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll return with rebuttal. Okay, we will get started in just one minute. If you can please take your seats, thank you. All right, we will reconvene this meeting. Next up, we have a rebuttal by AFSMI. Mr. Doran, can you please...
Yes, you have...
...inform them of their time?
36 minutes remaining if you need it.
Okay, I'd like to first start off with, she said there was no vacancies. Well, we all know that's not true, that we started off the year with vacancies in every category out there from schoolway cafe managers, assistants, bus drivers, maintenance, warehouse. We all know that that's inaccurate. And then she said about the wages, I'm not real sure where she got her figures at, but it comes out to an 18.9% average wage increase, and y'all can confirm that if you like. Pay scale, not sure where she got that from. That's an old pay scale. So I'm not sure some of the information where she was gathering from, but it was inaccurate.
I'd like to address some specifics also. I thank the opposing counsel for illustrating that by law, what the process is and that we're here and the bargaining process, whatever, but also incorporating into that, into that law is that while you're at impasse, you're entitled to continue negotiations. You're entitled to continue going back and forth to see if you could resolve the impasse. In this instance, management refused to meet. After the vote, there was no further negotiations, no further meetings, and that was not in the spirit of the law or as well as what PERC mandates. As to us changing our proposal when we were at the table to 4% to 7.5, well, a couple things happened. Number one, there was a PERC decision that says that when you reach impasse, you don't have to stick to your last offer or to your first offer. You deal with what you have to deal with. And I think that was, that decision is about a year old or maybe two years old. I'm not an attorney, so maybe the counsel could enlighten us as to when that decision came through. That's number one. Number two, things don't remain the same. Things change. I mean, I wish, I wish I was back, I was still 26, but as you could see, my white hair has caught up, age has caught up. Things change. When we took this to a vote to the membership, and remember, yes, the negotiating committee TA'd this, tentative agreed to it, but it goes to ratification to the membership, just like your management TA something, it must come to you for ratification. Our membership rejected this. I'm not sure where she got the numbers that 19% voted, but I'll tell you this: you've all run for election. You have never had an election where 100% of those eligible to vote came to vote. Well, that's what happens at union votes too. Not 100% people come to vote. But what she failed to illustrate, and I want you to take a look at the numbers that she presented, two out of three people, two out of three voters rejected the economic package. They didn't reject the language, they didn't reject nothing else, but two out of three of your employees said, "That is not enough money with what is going on." So when we got down to looking at the CPI, 7.5, when we got down to looking at Flagler County, at Putman County, at Lake County, and we saw that we are the lowest paid employees of the surrounding area, yes, we did go and change our figures. And we're asking you to take that into consideration. Volusia County, the lowest paid employer, the lowest, has the lowest paid employees from any school district in this area. You're surrounded by counties, and they all pay more than you. We need you to please do something about that because your employees need economic relief. Where was I? We did not present to you a possibility of using funds from a non-reoccurring source. We presented to you two places where you could find reoccurring money. A million dollars a year extra, which is newfound. I don't know if you've considered it yet in your new budget, okay? The calculation, the formula used between how Schoolway Cafe turns over money to the general fund has changed. It started January 1st. You're going to have a million dollars of reoccurring money going into your, into your general fund. We ask you to take a look at your buses. You buy buses from your reoccurring funds. Buy five less. Keep buying them. You have to replace. We cannot have our kids going in buses that break down. But buy five less. That's all we're asking. That's a million and a half of non-reoccurring funds that is there for you to use to help your employees reach a standard of living where they can continue working here in Volusia County, where they, you retain experienced workers, and where you attract workers. Here's one of the things, now, I'm the director. I deal with 27 counties, 29 different locals, and I had a hard time with your pay scale and your negotiations, and I don't get involved unless there's an issue. And one of the things I noticed is that there's a better solution. There's an easier solution. You don't want to deal with such big pay scales? Well, we know that you gave non-bargaining units a 1.5 in total increase. You gave the view a 2.3 increase. The figures that she put up there show that you gave AFSMI the least, the least. We're as worthy employees as your teachers, we're as worthy employees as your administration. We're not second-class citizens. We ask that you consider us at the same level. If you give us, let's say, a $1.50 across-the-board increase to everybody, put the pay scale aside, put the percentages aside, go to something simple, a $1.50 increase for everybody across the board. You raise your minimums, everybody, you meet the new state minimum of $11, everybody moves up. That's something to consider. That comes out to about 2.4, 2.5 million dollars, in the range of the 2.3 of the view. That's something for you to consider, okay? Our point is as follows: we need help. The only place we can get help is here. We are overtaxed, overworked. You got bus drivers working two and three routes, and you have vacancies. You go, in the next break, go to your website, and you'll see that you're looking for bus drivers, you're looking for schoolway cafe, you're looking for maintenance guy. Every category you have out there advertised hiring. I don't know where she got that, that, you don't need no bus drivers, that you don't need only two, you only need a four buses. That's not according to your website, okay? So please, we ask you to take a look, not at what you, the guidelines you gave management to sit down at the beginning of the contract. Take a look at your employees now. We're not second-class citizens. We should get either the same or as close or a little more than what you offered the view. You gave them 2.3 million. A $1.50 only costs 2.4 million. It'll attract your people. It'll lessen our vacancies.
And I just want to make a notation in there. At the $15 an hour, what I'd ask for, for the starting pay for like Schoolway Cafe, still we're not bringing them up to poverty level. So if you needed your figures, poverty level, if they're a single person, have no children, because they have children, that's 18,000 a year is poverty level. That would only bring them up to 11,000 a year. Gross pay, that's before we take anything out of their check for any taxes, insurance, or anything that's taken out of their check. So y'all, right now, like I said, you have them working for $7,800 a year gross pay. So I'm asking you to value these people for what, you know, they deserve, in the same way with your, in the bus attendant, because they're the two lowest paid. And because their bus attendants, I mean, and bus drivers... bus attendants, I mean, and bus drivers are only guaranteed five hours a day, and the Schoolway Cafe are only guaranteed four hours a day. So, at the fifteen dollars, we're still not getting these people up to poverty level.
And the last point, I think I made it before, but you've had a lot of vacancies. Have your accounting department get to you how many vacancies you've had, and how much that has added to your surplus, so the money is there. Thank you.
I'd just like to also state that I would almost wager money that any one of our specific work groups, their total cumulative vacancies is equal to the total number of all the administrative vacancies that currently exist. So for every one of our work groups, we're equal to, if not more than, any vacancy that is a management position. And that alone just shows that we're not as important, in my purview, as filling management spots. If you don't have your employees, there's not really a place to have management. You know, that's, that's a really important thing to remember. That's all I wanna say.
And that was like last night, at the, at the board meeting, you know, Dr. Fritz made the comment to y'all, and y'all agreed to his salary, and he wanted to bring his people up to market value. And that's, you know, getting our people at the fifteen dollars an hour is not really up to market value, but it's, it's up, and you know, and like I say, you know, we need to value the people at the bottom just as much as we do at the top. So I'll have.
Okay.
Thank you so much, we will stop the clock. Mr. Doran, can you advise them on how much time they have remaining?
The district has twenty-seven minutes remaining.
Welcome, you can begin when you're ready, and you have how many minutes? Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven minutes.
Twenty-seven minutes.
Okay, great, thank you so much. So I just wanna address a couple of points, I promise I won't use all twenty-seven minutes. On the issue of the vacancies, there are a hundred and seventy-two bus routes and a hundred and seventy-two bus drivers, so that's why I said that there are...
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna ask you to please be respectful, okay? You all had your opportunity, your representation had the opportunity to speak, now it's the district's turn. Thank you.
The cost of the proposal is five point eight million, so the assertion that it's only an eighteen point nine percent, which is of course different than what they placed, the union placed before you coming into today, it's just not accurate. The, what I had presented to you in our proposal is based on the math, the distinction between what they're asking for versus what they had in the contract, and you divide that by the total number of what they had before, and that's how you get to the percentage of the percentage increase on that. Likewise, on the issue of the vote, they don't know how I got to nineteen percent, well, there are a hundred and forty-four members, the union told us that there were three hundred members who voted, two hundred voted to reject, one hundred voted in support of. If you, again, using that, that's two hundred out of a hundred, of one thousand forty-four employees is nineteen percent in terms of, that's the, that's the amount. So the number of employees who have rejected the contract is nineteen percent. You were, the union has made a lot of statements about what other counties pay, what other school districts pay, but the only, they haven't provided you with any evidence. The only submittal that they gave to you prior to today is the, their proposal.
Okay, can you please stop the time? Ladies and gentlemen, I've been very respectful to you all, we've listened, I've kindly asked you to not interrupt, and that's not what's happening here. We're all grown folks, ladies and gentlemen. You all owe this young lady respect as well, okay? The same way you all come and tell us, "Hey, our kids are on our buses acting up crazy, you guys," you're doing the same exact thing right now, ladies and gentlemen. Please, let us get through this process so that we can start talking. Do you guys want us to start talking? I'm sure that you do. We've gotta get past this respectfully. Please, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. On the issue of the negotiations, there was a statement made that we refused to bargain, and that's simply not a true statement. You are not here as PERC, you're not here to decide an unfair labor practice, but there has been no unfair labor practice. Rather, what we communicated after the ratification vote is that we had extended the full authority that we had, so in terms of having future, further negotiations, there was nothing to be had because there was no more authority, but we didn't refuse to meet. They didn't ask to say they wanna talk about the authority we have, they wanted to come here with the proposal that you have, in front of you. Additionally, there was a mention about a million dollars extra, that's non-recurring funds, those can't be used to pay salaries. There is statements that you can use capital funds that are allocated for buses to pay salaries, that's not accurate either. There was a statement regarding the amount of the contract for view support, and the view support employees, as you may recall, were at a lower pay rate than the AFSMI employees. So you can't compare those two contracts with respect to, to that issue. And additionally, as I put up before, the vacancies that existed at the paraprofessional level greatly outnumber any of the, any data, and there is no contrary data that's been provided to you by the union in terms of evidence. We provided the evidence in our, in our materials and in our presentation today. And so I thank you for your time, and I'm done with our presentation at this point.
Thank you so much. Does the school district, does the ASME have time for rebuttal with time remaining?
No, that's it.
So their time is done?
Yes.
Okay.
We've gone two rounds on each side, it's, all the presentations are complete. Now, if there's more information to come from either of the parties, it would have to be through questions posed by the...
I understand that we may be asked questions.
Yeah, you may be asked questions. So, from board members asking questions, you can get more information, but we had presentation rebuttal, presentation rebuttal.
Thank you. Board members, are there any procedural questions at this time? Hearing none, we will start off with Mr. Persis, who is up on the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate hearing both of the presentations. I have a question for the district, and that is, this contract that we are talking about, this contract, if it were retroactive, when would, when would be that starting date?
Sure, I can explain that, how that works. So, under the, what we've agreed to before coming here today, there is a retroactive pay. So that's not before you, in this, the dispute here today is just over the salary schedule. So what we agreed is for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022, that was what was TA'd, so it would go back to the beginning of the 2021, 2022, but retroactivity is not a disputed issue, so it's not something for the board to resolve today.
So then that would be July first of 2021?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and my second question is, this contract, is it, is it, would this contract, if we approved a contract, would this one expire on June thirtieth of 2022?
It would.
So...
So we would be back at the bargaining table.
So I was just gonna say, that's only three months, or four months, whatever it is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Ms. Haynes.
My question is specifically for Ms. Knowles. Ms. Knowles, you sent, you sent an email to Mr. Doran that he forwarded to us, and it says, "This is the pay scale that I'm proposing." Was there an attachment with the pay scale, or was it just what was in the subject line?
There should have been an attachment. Because he pulled it up. When I, 'cause I sent it to him, and, and to, I mean, he pulled, he pulled the attachment up.
This was sent to us, at your pay scale, and the attachment was the letter that was sent to certify it, to validate it.
Well, there was, well, well, that's what it would look like when everything is all said and done, but there is, but like, when you do, when you do the formula and how you do it, there is a spreadsheet and how, how that, you know, comes out in the figures and all that. There is a spreadsheet.
Okay, so, Mr. Doran, on Friday, February twenty-fifth, at seven eleven AM, Kathy Knowles sent you an email with a subject line saying, "I am sharing fifteen dollars with you." And then it said, "This is the pay scale that I am proposing." You forwarded that to us on Monday, February twenty-eighth, at eleven thirty-two AM, and there was no attachment to it, and so when I looked at it, I just went with what was in the subject line. So was there, or was there not an attachment?
I don't see any.
I forwarded you exactly what I received, and Ms. Burnett even asked about it, and I responded, "I don't know anything more than what I've..."
Because it should have been an atta, what, well, like I said, 'cause that's like, that is like what would, like it'd go in the back of the contract if this is, if the fifteen dollar one was agreed upon, but then, like, there was a spreadsheet that shows how many people was on step one, step two, and with the costing of it, is what, is it, is another spreadsheet, which is what, you know, she shared, but her percentages, you know, and how it was done, is, is not accurate. Because the way she had it done, she had people at like, averaging like thirty, forty percent, and it only actually comes out to eighteen point nine percent aver, average.
It isn't on my email, from that form.
So we received an email from Karen La Bossa on Friday, which had an attachment, which is that, yes.
That, that, that email you got as well, that was from Hector...
Hector Ramirez.
Hector Ramirez. And that did have an attachment, so you did get that.
That was on Wednesday, March ninth, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, we forwarded it, but we got it.
But like I said, that one showed you, that's just what the pay scale would actually, actually look like, and what goes in the back of the contract, but like, to, like, the other spreadsheet, like what she shared, shows, you know, how many people, it's like, like, we got, on step one, there's ten bus drivers, on step, you know, whatever, so some steps, there's not even anybody on those steps, and when it, the way she had the percentage over there, you know, wasn't, wasn't completely accurate or whatever, because it, it's just, it was different, I mean...
Okay, so you're talking about the one that we got from Karen on March the fourth?
Yes.
But that doesn't have what...
Right, so like, to get the figures and to see how many people are on each step, is the spreadsheet, like she showed up there, like the one she had up here earlier, the district shared?
Was that submitted to Mr. Doran?
This should have been attached, yes.
Can you validate whether that was submitted, please?
Sometimes I can't get it on my phone.
I asked if they had submitted that.
But this, but this right here, it, what this is, is that, is the starting pay at fifteen, but it just tells you how many people are, would get fifteen dollars an hour.
So the reason I ask is because if you did submit it and we didn't receive it, then we, I would move that we accept it if, if...
I thought I had sent it, I'll maybe see if I can pull it up on my phone.
For whatever reason...
The opposing counsel had it, so, the only way she could have got it was by us sending it to, to...
I'm asking of you all if...
This is what we got.
And that would be what the...
So we got a document that's called AFSMI Proposed Pay, and it's basically, if you can see that, looks like that, it's got the color, that's what Ms. Cuthbert told me of.
Yeah, that's the pay scale.
Okay, that's the document that we...
But it didn't have any numbers of like, each, the number of people on each level or anything.
If it was agreed upon of what this, how the scale would look, not with like, the thing.
But I mean, I have this one here, it's the same as what the district has presented, I mean, I don't know if you have the one from the district, should be the same, but the way they had the percentage cost is, is different. Hang on, I'm trying to see which one it was.
So as you're aware, we don't speak to the, after we go to impasse, we no longer speak to the district, so we are impartial, so even if the district received it, we can't speak to the district and say, you know...
Well, I have this one, if you would like to...
So, so because it wasn't submitted, and if you tell me that it was submitted, and you can show that, we'll consider it, otherwise, if it wasn't submitted, I, I, you know, it wasn't submitted for us to see, so it's not something I could take under consideration today because it wasn't submitted in the timeframe that was in the order. But I do wanna give you the opportunity that if you do feel, to answer Ms. Haynes' question, if it was submitted and it was omitted for whatever reason, and I know that a lot of times when you send it forward in email, sometimes the attachment drops off.
Yeah, and it could have, 'cause I thought I had both of them on there, 'cause that's why when she questioned, or when he asked the question, what did those title, what that stuff meant, that's what I replied back, and I just kinda, you know, screenshotted the top to, and I wrote, you know, to explain what they were.
Well, now, that's a separate email, so...
Right.
May, should I explain that?
Please.
Okay, so there was a request by Ms. Burnett to receive the answers to some questions that she had prior to this hearing today, and, you know, it would be, to present that to you, it would be tantamount to, for instance, a judge saying, "Well, before the trial starts, I want you to send me the information, or answer these questions." There's no problem with that if both parties agree to it. So I sent it out to both parties and said, "Tell me if you agree to forwarding the attached information," and I did get a response from Ms. Knowles saying she didn't have any problem with it, now, this is all in the last forty-eight hours, so just very close to the hearing. I did not get a response from the district that I'm aware of, and so it just didn't get forwarded on to you because I didn't have both parties agreeing to forward it. Now, it was just the answers to some questions, we can, and I said even in the email to the parties, "If both of you don't agree to this, we'll just bring it out, we can present it at the hearing," which was twenty-four hours away at that point, that's where we are with that.
So procedurally, was this submitted, there was a deadline for submitting documentation, was this submitted prior to or after the deadline?
Okay, I forwarded to the board exactly what Ms. Knowles sent to me. If the attachment was not on there, I was unaware of it, and on the face of the email, it didn't seem to indicate that there was an attachment per se, as I recall, but if there was an attachment that you wanted them to have, it should have been included as well in the documents. You remember, you had that deadline, and you did submit documents.
Right, and I thought, and I thought both of them was attached, this, and then showing, and then what y'all have is pretty, is pretty much this, but it's just, doesn't show all the compression.
Gotcha. So, so do we, do we agree that it was not submitted in the timely fashion?
Okay, I agree that it's not submitted.
Okay, I'm just making sure, and so I just wanna make sure that we're clear because I don't want anybody to be under the impression that, you know, we, we received this paperwork, there's a timeframe by which the order said, "We must receive all paperwork," and so what we're discussing was submitted after that. So if it had been asked of me, would I accept that beyond the deadline? We extended the deadline twenty-four hours because nothing was submitted, for whatever the reason may be, and so I extended that grace for twenty-four hours in order to ensure that your representation was done, so we gave them an extra day to provide that paperwork, at which point they did. So, to be clear, this documentation was not received in the timely manner of this extension, and so for that reason, I, there's really no need to move to not, to not consider that because of the fact that it was not provided in a timely fashion, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay.
It's in your discretion.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Haynes?
I'm passing for right now.
All right. Anybody else? There's nobody else on the speaker? Mr. Persis?
Mr. Chair, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I kindly ask you to allow me to weigh in? I mean, I didn't know if you were ready, and as you know, we...
Sure.
So I do have...
You're the chair.
Thanks. I do have several questions for the school district and as well as for AFSMI. When you say to the, and this is to the school district, if you can just come over, I know you guys need to pick a side, we gotta love each other here, come on. When you say that the wages are fair and competitive, how, what are you basing that on?
In terms of the competitive nature of the wages?
Yes.
That this isn't the lowest paid school district in terms of, of the salary, but the salaries are competitive with the, with the surrounding school districts.
So in, in your presentation, you mentioned that, that proof wasn't provided on that, but I don't know, I'm taking your word for it, because I don't know what other surrounding school districts are paying. Do you have that information?
I don't think it's necessary for you to have that information to make the determination that this is a competitive proposal. It provides a substantial pay increase, so based on what was previously provided. So they're asking for you to expend five point eight million dollars, and saying that there is, there, there are other school districts who pay more. In order to support that, as the petitioner, they would need to provide evidence to do that. And so I don't, respectfully, that, that would be our position on that issue.
Thank you. Do you happen to have, and again, I know this is, you know, because we don't discuss this with the district, I can't, I don't have, didn't have the opportunity like we normal, normally do to ask and say, "Can you provide me this data?" But I'm sure we can quickly figure out what our minimum percentage increase was for instructional, minimal percentage increase for support staff. And even as late as last night, we had a minimum increase for non-bargaining of starting salaries. And so they provided us percentages, but I'd really like to validate that, to understand what kind of pattern we have set. Because, you know, a, as you are aware, this was negotiated prior to us doing support, where we went from ten dollars to thirteen fifty an hour, which in some cases could be seen as a thirty percent increase for some employees. And so that hap, this happened prior to that. So I'm curious to see what, from our lowest employee, what percentage increase for those three units did we issue? So that's a question there.
Okay.
And then I'm going to ask you once again, and please feel free to ask the district if you need to, or if you need to refer, how many bus driver vacancies do we currently have right now, based on the allotted positions that we are expected to have? So we budget a certain number of positions. How many bus driver, how many attendant, and how many Schoolway Cafe, and how many, I, I don't want to use the term other, but folks that fall under other categories? How many vacancies do we have? Because I'm having a hard time with zero. Sorry.
Sure.
And, and on both sides, and, and I'm getting to you guys, so don't start celebrating, okay? Because zero makes no sense. And anytime I can poke, and I work with data in my real life, if I can poke a hole in your data, the rest of it is no good.
Well, zero is the, when you look at the routes and the number of drivers, so that, that is accurate data. I understand what you're saying, I don't have that off the top of my head. So I'm going to have to confer with the district on those issues.
They're listening.
But in terms of, of what I think you're talking about, is that you hire for additional employees in case one of those employees is out on leave, or sick, or has some other, other way which takes them out of that position. So there are a hundred and seventy-two routes, and there are a hundred and seventy-two drivers. But I, I can find out the other information for you, sir.
Perfect. And so then my next question is... So those are the questions that I have right now for the district. The question I have for AFSMI and going back, so what did you say the starting rate for Seminole County was for bus drivers right now?
Sixteen, I have.
Sixteen fifty-three, does that sound right?
Seminole County, sixteen dollars.
What, what is?
Sixteen, sixteen something, it's not just sixteen.
What was the number you quoted?
Because I, I did get it, and I have, because I do have all their information, because I did my homework of all the counties in their pay scales.
What is their, what is their starting pay for bus drivers right now?
Um, bus drivers, for Volusia's thirteen, Seminole sixteen fifty-three, Lake County's twelve seventy-three, and Flagler is fifteen.
Okay, sixteen fifty-three in Seminole County starts on July first, that's not their current rate.
That is what was just ratified, plus they got a bunch of bonuses and stuff, things.
But that is effective July first. So again, and, and the same, I, I did a little homework on.
Were the, yeah, were the.
I did a little homework on neighboring districts, because I'm in Deltona, and I realize that folks live in Deltona and can go to Seminole County. So I did my homework there. So what is their current, right now, this year?
Thirteen twenty-six.
Thirteen twenty-six is their.
Thirteen twenty-six to sixteen something.
Okay, so their current rate right now, so as we're discussing this contract, Seminole County's at thirteen?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So the sixteen dollar amount actually starts on July first, which is what the next negoti-, set of negotiations would be. Right now, it's thirteen dollars in Seminole County. Do we agree on that?
No, it's thirteen twenty-six.
Thirteen twenty-six, so right now.
That I made, which is above the thirteen dollars that we have here.
Okay, so right now, the rate in Seminole County is thirteen?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. So it's not sixteen fifty-three, that actually starts in July. Okay, so I, I don't want any, it's easy to throw around numbers. But we, we have to be accurate, because what happens is, when you say sixteen fifty-three, if we make a decision that's any less than that, folks feel like they're being shortchanged, when in reality, okay, yes, we're not, we're not at par. But we're not that far apart as we relate to the year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, which is what we are in question right here today. So I, I just, yes, sir?
I hate to interrupt.
Please do.
A, a decision maker.
No, no, please do, we're having a discussion.
Okay. We received, as part of the material that we received, I think it was from Mr. Doran, was this bus driver average comparison made by the district. Okay? And if you circle the five surrounding, the, the surrounding counties, Seminole County, their average bus driver is, pay is... So this came from the management, is twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifteen, while Volusia's County average bus driver pay is seventeen thousand one hundred and ninety-three. So yes, the starting pay is thirteen, currently thirteen, uh, twenty-six, I think it was. Thirteen twenty-six, going up to sixteen something, all right? But the average pay for bus drivers, according to management's data, the difference is four thousand dollars.
So do we agree that longevity? So you don't, you can't tell me how many bus drivers have been in Seminole County for a long time? You can't tell me how many were new? So I, I hear what you're saying, and, and this is, I'm one vote of five. I hear what you're saying. However, as we all know in education, it's not apples to apples. And this, there, the, the way that pay is structured, especially when we go upon years of years and years of what I would consider a flawed system, honestly, it is what it is. But, you know, you, you, I, I don't, and I'm just verbalizing what's in my head, I hear what you're saying, but you, I, I'd have to know how many bus drivers have been there for a long time? Are they making more because they work more? You know, how many of, there's so many different variables.
There are, there are quite a few variables, but nevertheless, our statement in our presentation, that Volusia County is the lowest paid of Brevard, Flagler, Lake, no, don't count Brevard, Brevard, you're not attached to Brevard. But Flagler, Lake, Putman, and Seminole, you are the lowest paid. Not only did our research show that, but management's research showed that, that they provide. So that, that is our statement.
So the other part that I'm having a hard time with, and I don't understand where the logic came from, but you stated, "If you want, give everybody a dollar fifty." But that doesn't add up to fifteen dollars, we gotta make up your mind.
You're absolutely right, sir. You're absolutely, it doesn't, it doesn't add up to the, to what we presented. What? I'm, I'm currently negotiating for Martin County School District. We just finished Pope County School District, and we just finished Manatee County School District. The way we resolve the issue, because every, of, every of the school districts, they have steps. Nobody is in their corresponding correct step anymore, so the steps no longer represent seniority. And it has to do when we hit the, the recession, and people started moving away from the steps, and we took pay freezes, et cetera. So how do we deal with that? Okay? So one of the ways that we started dealing with it, for example, in, in, in Pope County, we just negotiated a dollar fifty for everybody across the board. And the acknowledgement that from now on, the steps no longer correspond to the years you're with the school board. So we moved away from that there. In Manatee County, we, we, what we did there was, we brought up some people to their corresponding steps by seniority, uh, some job classifications, next year we'll do the other ones, and so we're doing a, a, a slow process there. In Martin County, I don't know how that's going to go as in here. Uh, we don't know how it's going to go. So, but the solution that we found, which was easiest, not just for, for the payroll department, because it is a problem for payroll and all the managementations that they have to do to the, everybody's payroll, and for the members, was move away from steps corresponding to your year of service. Everybody's going to get a dollar fifty increase, and that's it. And we'll deal with, with next year, next year.
Thank you.
So that's, that's the solution we found there, so I figured I'd let you know.
I have a question for the district. There was mention of a million extra dollars because of the change in Schoolway Cafe. Uh, was that attributed to the fact that we are now storing the food and delivering it? So now we're charging Schoolway Cafe more money because we are having to deliver the food and store it and do all of that? Would you assert that this isn't really Schoolway Cafe giving the district an extra million dollars versus it's the cost of doing business? Because now we're storing the food, delivering the food, and all of that? Is, is, was that, is, is, does that sound, are we talking about this? I want to make sure I'm looking at the same million dollars you are.
She's the school manager, so she knows about that, not me.
In the past, when, when the warehouse was originally, was running, we paid, it was, it was, this person, we might pay you twenty-one percent of this salary. This one was like eighty percent of this salary, they might pay you a hu- hundred percent of your salary. So everybody that worked there, that handled our food in some way, the freezer person, the driver, manager, whatever, we paid a percentage of salaries. So when they closed the warehouse down, and we went strictly back to U.S. Foods, then all that people got money, went back to the general fund, because we was no longer using that service. As we do the indirect cost, which was like, um, five hundred thou-, five hundred fifty-four thousand dollars this year, indirect cost that we, that Schoolway Cafe reimbursed for services, um, to y'all, which included like maintenance salaries, um, we reimburse if they work on our equipment and things like that. So when we opened this, the warehouse back up, instead of going back into all the different percentages, they decided just to do a flat rate. And it was per case that comes into the warehouse.
So.
To help reimburse the salaries of the people in the general fund.
So would, do, is it a fair assertion, is it fair to say that the reason why, and I think you just spoke to the history of it, the reason why the district is collecting more of the million dollars is because we're now bus dri-, we're now, bus driving, we're now delivering the food, we're storing the food, we're doing all of these things we didn't do before?
You did that before. You did that before. We, uh, the warehouse is always delivered to us. We had, um, we got food outside from U.S. Foods, always, um, and also we had stuff that was direct shipped to the warehouse. So I got deliveries every week for the last, well, until we dropped out, you know, ten, twelve years that I've been doing it, but before we dropped out, we always had deliveries from the warehouse. So that, that's always been there.
Thank you. Dr. Shanoff, you want to weigh in?
The comment was made that we're getting a million dollars back into the general fund since January. Those, those dollars are going specifically to pay salaries of new employees that we've had to employ in the warehouse. They are going towards the costs of the acquisition of new trucks, drivers, the utilities that are involved with standing up twenty thousand square feet of freezer space, the new racks that had to be built and put in. Uh, we're not making money off of warehousing Schoolway Cafe. We did this out of necessity, because U.S. Foods cut our contract.
Thank you. That is all of the questions that I have. So Mr. Persis, you're up next to speak?
I think Mr. West.
Oh, Mr. West, sorry.
Sorry, that's okay. I was going to try to answer a couple of your questions.
Please.
I'm sorry, we were, we were gathering some of the information for you. Um, let me clarify about the bus driver vacancies that I, if I could for a minute, because I know that's been kind of a contentious issue. And saying that we have a hundred and seventy-two routes and a hundred and seventy-two bus drivers, obviously, it makes it look like we don't have any vacancies. That's because we did reduce, and, and Dr. Shanoff has been working with transportation, the number of routes based on the number of kids we have. The, the reality is, is that we've collapsed some of those, and that means that some bus drivers are doing double and triple runs. Is that fair to say? Okay, thank you. So that means that, of course, their hours are going to be extended as well. So what, if we look at kind of the average number, or a number of routes that we had in the past, and it actually came from that report that I sent you, it's two hundred and one routes that we had previously, and that actually was prior to COVID. So we recognize we had to shrink down a little bit, but, but we haven't shrunk down that much. So we recognize we still have a need for bus drivers, yes. We, we absolutely will acknowledge that statewide, there was a need for bus drivers. So, but, but as far as the, the number of bus drivers right now, we, we do advertise a vacancy of a bus driver, and we advertise a vacancy of a bus attendant on the website, because we're constantly doing training. And we, we want to hire sub-bus drivers to come in, to get trained, so that we can train them to be bus drivers. And when they go through that process, we do put them on a route. So I just kind of wanted to explain that process, and to, to, to not say that we're taking it and saying there are zero vacancies, that we just want to clarify what that means, okay?
So as I was sitting here, I went into our website a little while ago.
Yes.
And I noticed that we only do that for bus drivers and bus attendants. All the other positions have thirty vacancies, and you can see thirty. So I'll, I'll ask once again, and to, to counsel and you, Mr. West, and whoever wants to answer the question, how many bus driver vacancies do we have today? Because if they were on the website, I can tell you they're thirty, they're forty. I can't tell you that right now, because we only advertise one.
And, and if I could, and I'll try this, Dr. Shanoff, and you can come speak if you need to.
We can go to a break if we need to gather this information.
No, no, that's, that's okay. I, I think what the issue is, is that we have every route covered right now with, and I mean, you're looking, I mean, I'm trying to answer the question of, of what it exactly is. When we get a bus driver, we obviously take that route, and we're constantly shifting. So I, I hesitate to say zero vacancies right now, because obviously, we're advertising for bus drivers right now. But what I would say, if I had to answer your question precisely, is our optimum is about two hundred and one routes. And I've spoken to, to Rod about this as well, uh, over in transportation. Um, I was there last week, and, and actually, I got to ride the bus with a lovely young lady that has been here for over thirty years, and she invited me to ride her bus. And, and I recognize that we have some bus drivers that are doing those double and, and triple routes. So I would say we have twenty-nine routes that we could potentially expand to if we had the bus drivers. Is that fair to say, Dr. Shanoff? Just say yes.
And I don't need an exact number, I just know that it's not zero.
We will, we will gladly take up to and over twenty-nine drivers. We will gladly take anybody who is interested in driving a bus, train them and get them on a bus. Twenty-nine would be, would get us to where we were, to our route level pre-COVID. It would eliminate our need to double up, triple up routes, no doubt about it. So, and we would also like to. So, and we would also like to employ an overage. So then when we did have, yeah, when we, when we needed sub bus drivers, we could. And we would normally like to maintain a ten percent overage.
Okay. So that is thirty-two then?
The other issue, and I'll bring it back, don't worry. You know he's coming back.
How many, how many bus attendants? So, Dr. Shanoff, how many bus attendant positions of those thirty-two, because we added the overage of percentage, how many bus attendants would you say, if we had thirty-two extra routes, how many bus attendants would you say would be needed to suffice that?
Ideally, we would like to have enough attendance to match our number of drivers that we were adding.
Great. Thank you. So that's, how many vacancyers are there in Schoolway Cafe right now?
I, I don't have that data.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if neither one has that, that's fine.
I'm not sure exactly what is online right now because what we were before pre-COVID, we was at over, between managers and assistants, five hundred, and currently, she said it today, we have like two hundred and thirty-two assistants, and so we got what, sixty? How many, sixty-six?
Seventy-two.
Minus eleven to touch how many managers we have. So we're short eleven managers currently right now, eleven schools out there without managers. We have some people in training if they stay and continue, and I'm not sure about leaving. And we have another one retiring, so there would be twelve currently in June. But assistant wise, because they did a compression on staffing, we were, what we were pre-COVID.
To Dr. West, how many vacancies do we have in Schoolway Cafe right now?
I think that Dr. Shanoff's going to have to get that number. I don't know that off the top of my head. I would...
I, I know, I know managers, but how many, what they show shortage in the thing is what we, what they're currently in, because I used to normally run eleven and I'm only now running eight when I was staffed, fully staffed before pre-COVID.
So I will say that was, is another position that we have one listed, so that's open, so a Schoolway Cafe assistant can get that information too, because that's run through the district, through that office. So...
I'm trying to unpack what our, so here's the reason I'm asking. I'm trying to unpack what our need is because, you know, the district asserted that there were a lot more paraprofessional positions and the data that was provided clearly was off.
Well, and I, the tricky thing about that is, is because paraprofessionals are assigned to the school and they're actually allocated at the schools, we keep track of that. Because the bus drivers and the bus attendants and the Schoolway Cafe are run through the district and they're at the, at the operations center, they are the ones that keep those numbers in regards to that. So that's why, I'm sorry, I can't give you those accurate numbers right now. Can I mention two other things that you had asked questions about? The, the bus driver salaries averages that, that were referenced, and that is off of the chart that I provided you all based on the request that you made because that is what we had readily available from the state. And we all acknowledge there are some, I'm going to say apple to oranges inconsistencies there, primarily because of the number of months that they're employed. You'll notice at Seminole County and Flagler Counties, as he had mentioned, there are higher numbers. They work ten months a year and our, our employees work nine months a year. So there, there's going to be a discrepancy based on the number of days that they work and the routes that they have. So that, I mean, it's just apples and oranges is all I'm saying. Not to say that we, we don't have low rates and that we want to bring those up. Okay? And then the other thing that you had asked was what was the minimum that we gave each, the non-bargaining, the instructional and the view support. A two percent raise for non-bargaining is the minimum. A two and a half percent raise is a minimum for our instructional and a two percent raise for review support is the minimum that we've given those folks.
So for view support, some folks went from ten dollars to thirteen fifty.
Some did, yes. I'm sorry, I thought you asked the minimum.
Yeah, so yeah, so if our minimum was ten dollars an hour for view support and we took them to thirteen fifty...
I see. I'm sorry, I thought, we, we thought that they, you were asking what was the minimum salary increase in each of those areas? I apologize, that's why the percentage was there.
Right, so just, just to, because again, they provided, so you know, for someone who was making ten dollars an hour going to thirteen fifty, that's thirty-something percent.
And that was our paraprofessionals, correct?
That was our paras. And so, you know, the assertion from the district was that there was a greater need for those folks than bus drivers, which we clearly, I, I won't say we, I say I, clearly realized that we were a little bit off on those numbers. That's all I have right now. Next up, Mr. Persis, and thank you for allowing me to go. Mr. Persis?
Yeah, I was going to, Jamie, I thought I had a question, so you want?
Ms. Haynes?
Yes, I have several. So I'd like to start with this. In any of our Schoolway Cafes, are we using temporary help?
Yes.
His answer is yes, because he already knew I knew the answer.
Thank you, I, I would...
So I've already, I've been to several schools already this week and I have met individuals in the Schoolway Cafe as I've been serving breakfast that are there because we've hired outside temporary help. So my concern is, even if we get some numbers, I don't know that they're the accurate numbers for how many positions we truly have vacant, because we have filled some of them with agency temp help that are in, working in these positions. I have been concerned for quite a while, and I'm going to do Schoolway Cafe first, about the manager piece, because I brought up the piece about how we had people covering two schools more than a year ago. And, you know, we supposedly went after the statement, we were no longer going to have a manager cover two schools. And what I'm hearing tonight is we still have eleven schools that don't have a manager. And then I know that, what, is, am I wrong?
I'm sorry, use this chair. It's kind of hot.
We have eleven schools that have manager vacancies. We have nine schools that have manager vacancies that are filled by an intern, manager intern.
So eleven that just outright don't have a manager and nine?
Of, of the eleven, nine are filled by a Schoolway Cafe manager intern who is on their way to becoming a manager. That's typically how we staff it. So we, we, we do not have, we have but two that are currently staffed by our, our district staff have been going in and filling where we do not have managers being filled.
Okay. All right. And so do you know approximately how many, and I'm not looking for an exact number, how many people we've hired through a temporary staffing agency to fill the Schoolway Cafe positions for serving?
I don't, I don't know the exact number. I wouldn't even venture to, to guess. I do know that we use temporary staffing when we are drastically short where it would impact, but we would not supplant a vacancy with a permanent temporary staffing. Temporary staffing is temporary. It would be day-to-day. It's not something that we would ask for, for six weeks, eight weeks at a time. That's, that's not how we operate.
Okay. All right. Then I too agree with Mr. Cologne and those of you in the audience, as far as, I know a lot of you are doing double and triple routes. So tonight, when it was said, we have a hundred and seventy-two routes and we have a hundred and seventy-two bus drivers. My question to you, Dr. Shanoff, is, did we just basically look at everybody within the district that held a CDL license and therefore said, we have a hundred and seventy-two people in the district that have a CDL license, even if they hold it and they're a coach at a school, even if they hold it and they work on, you know, changing out the tires or the batteries on the bus? I mean, how did we come up with, we have a hundred and seventy-two bus drivers are all preface it with people that hold a CDL license? Because these people wouldn't be doing double and triple routes if we had a hundred and seventy-two drivers out there every day.
So, so it's not accurate to say that we, we have a hundred and seventy-two folks in the district that have, that carry CDLs and everybody who carries a CDL operates a bus. We have, we have folks that carry CDLs but operate trucks. We have folks that are coaches that operate activity buses that have CDLs. We, we have, we have absences, any number of, any number of absences on a given day where we need to cover routes, where we then lean on those that are there to go ahead and provide help for those routes. We then end up doubling up routes, tripling up routes. We cover routes the best that we can. Our managers are doing the best that they can to, to work through those and our drivers are doing heroic things in order to get our kids to school. So when we set out to establish the routes at the beginning of the year, we went in with the number of operators that we had at the time. And that's what we've worked towards. Those are the routes that we've published to our communities. When we've had to make adjustments to those routes, we've made adjustments to those routes and then published them out to the communities. Between the routers and the operators, everybody's doing the best that they can. It's very difficult for us to, it's very, it's, it's, it's difficult in every district where we're doing everything within our power to go ahead and transport kids as best we can. And our managers, our routing managers are trying to move mountains. It's just an unfortunate condition where we're at right now with a bus driver shortage nationwide.
Thank you, and thank you for being honest about that. Do we have any, any drivers or attendants that we're using from the temp agency?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. So other than Schoolway Cafe, are we using any, in, anybody that's in this bargaining unit, are we using any temp help that you know of?
Any temp help in?
Any of, because the problem is this covers a large group of people. It covers all the Schoolway Cafe, so we already know we're using temp help in Schoolway Cafe.
Correct.
Okay. Under bus drivers and bus attendants, are we using any temp help?
No.
Okay. Under campus advisors, are we using any temp help?
I'm not, I'm not over campus advisor, so I couldn't answer that.
Okay. Then under, over the group that Will represents, because Will represents a different group, are we using any temp help for the area that Will represents?
We would contract out some jobs if we needed to, or we would, or we would authorize overtime, but no, temp, no.
Okay. So under the area that Will represents, do we have any established vacancies in that area?
I don't have that information with me. But yes, I'm sure we have vacancies.
All right.
I'm sorry, we're having a private conversation. You asked the question and so I just asked if they were published and Will said, we can send them to the... If you don't mind.
No, it's okay. So there, so I'm in an department since two thousand and seven and I know the climate of, of our school district drastically changed in a way and we downsized, but advertised vacancies in our historic vacancies from that downsizing, while increasing square footage, we're fifty to a hundred people shy in our department from where we used to be. So all that pressure is put on to our shoulders and that is why we've started contracting out way more than we used to when I started, if that best and most accurately explains the question.
Thank you, Will.
So we actually do publish the vacancies when they come to us, but we have done some, I'm sorry, we have done some downsizing, I think is fair to say. Yep.
Okay, so what I gathered tonight listening is, pre-COVID, we had over five hundred in Schoolway Cafe. Where we're sitting at now is two hundred and some. We clearly know where we're at with managers. Will just shared that from where we were in two thousand, and we all know what happened in two thousand and eight, those of us that have been here a long time. But we also have added a lot of square footage since two thousand and eight. We could name all the schools that we've added. You're approximately fifty to a hundred people down, so we are contracting outside. And as we well know, we've learned, contracting outside, whether it be for Schoolway Cafe with temp help, or whether it be to do projects under that area, that always costs us more money than if we had it in-house. Bus drivers, what we know is, pre-COVID, we had approximately two hundred and one routes. And I think even at that time, some of those were overcrowded. I mean, because that's down from where I think we were even a few years before that, but that's at least twenty-nine routes. But we are short drivers because we've got people doubling and tripling up. And yes, I understand absences, we don't have a lot of wiggle room. Attendants, we don't seem to really have how many were down there. But, you know, we've heard in some of the places where we need them, we don't have them. So here's where I, here's where I sit, and anybody that knows me knows this. Sitting here tonight, because I'm, I'm speaking personally for myself, no one else on this board right now. I'm not speaking for the rest of the group. I'm out there and I talk to these people. And I've done that for years. I've done that from the day I started as a classroom teacher. I always got to know my bus drivers and my Schoolway Cafe help and any maintenance people that came on campus, because it takes every one of them, as well as all the teachers out there, the paras, the office specialists, the administrators, it takes everybody working together to ensure every student gets the best education they can get. Here's where I'm very disheartened tonight. It was hard to sit here and hear a presentation that said, there are no vacancies for bus drivers, because I know in my heart there are. I, I mean, just this week alone, the places that I have visited and the people that I have talked to and the work that I've seen them doing, they're working hard. And none of these individuals here tonight would be working as hard as what they're working if they didn't care about our students. Every one of them cares. You can't be a bus driver and put up with some of what they put up with and, and look, we've watched it change over the years and I'll be honest, I'll say it aloud, parents need to start being parents, okay? I love parents, but you can't tell them, you can't excuse away behavior, all right? I, I was a parent, I didn't excuse away behavior. But every one of them makes a difference every day. And if they're not here, we're not going to get our kids transported and we're not going to get them fed. There's only so many of us to go fill in out there for these jobs. And I, the one thing I've said, I'll do any job except, I'm sorry, I'm fifty-five, I'm going to be fifty-six in June, I own that, I am not getting my CDL license, all right? Love all of you, but I'm not doing it. I'll ride a bus as a bus attendant, but I'm not getting my CDL license. And I've driven this, I've driven the Volusia County vans, I've driven the bread truck out there over the years, I've done things like that. Hats off to bus drivers though. But, and nothing against you, young lady, but we could have done a better job tonight, in my opinion, of presenting a true picture and not trying to say that there's zero, because we all know there's not zero, all right? So that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Mr. Persis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I also want to thank everyone for being here. What Ms. Haynes said, certainly... What Ms. Haynes said, certainly, uh, as far as our appreciation for all of you, uh, I know that's how I feel. I know that's how all of us feel. And we've said it here many, many times. Uh, all this talk about new money and vacancies and comparisons with other districts, uh, that'd be good information when we start to negotiate the next contract, the one that's going to start in just three and a half months for twenty fiscal year, twenty, twenty-three, uh, twenty-three. Uh, tonight, though, tonight isn't that. Tonight is the time to set the salary schedule so that the AFSCME employees can receive the retro pay and a salary increase that they should have had from July first, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, so I think all this information, since it's fresh right now, we're getting new information, I think this is going to be very helpful as we go forward and do everything we can to reward our AFSCME en- employees in a, in a, in a fair and just manner. But that's for another day. And that's for negotiations, uh, which I'm sure will start very soon. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Chair, on that, and given that, uh, fact, uh, I would move that this board, uh, I would move that the superintendent's recommendation to resolve the disputed issue of the salary schedule be adopted by this board, as we previously agreed on, all of us and the union and the district, we all agreed on, on, to do this on October fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. And fully set forth, and that would include that if they ratified it, that they would get their, uh, retro pay back to July first of two thousand and twenty-one, and that this would take effect on the date of this hearing in accordance with the requirements of Florida statutes, section four, four, seven point four, zero, three.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Motion's been made by Mr. Persis. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Board, time to go around the room and talk about proposals. And if anybody has any ideas and wants to start, please do. If not, I do have some ideas.
I have a question.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. Ms. Knowles?
Yes.
I, I just have a question.
Sure.
And I mean this respectfully, so please don't take anything but that. But when, when you were negotiating with the district for, um, for this contract and you agreed upon it, how, how did you know, or why did you agree upon it when we now know that your team didn't agree upon it? Where, where were you getting the information?
Because the district come back and they said that the board had directed them that that was their final and best offer. And if not, then we would go to impasse.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
You can go.
I have a question for Mr. West. There was a longevity bonus piece of this. Sorry, Mr. West, I know. There was a longevity piece to that. What, what did that look like? Because we, we're, we've talked about the pay rate, but I'm curious what the additional monies that were agreed upon for longevity look like?
So, the longevity piece was, I'm sorry. The longevity piece was a piece that we actually agreed to and that the union had presented. Um, and it had specifically to, come on up. And that's not a part that's actually in, in question here, but.
Correct. I'm just, just to get a big picture of where we are.
Um, the longevity piece, and I don't have the chart in front of me, but it's based on the years of service and then a fixed amount, um, per, per year. So, um, I think it goes up to four hundred. I, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. The longevity, okay, what it is, longevity amount that we were going to receive, that part didn't change. What we got changed in, in our contract was you had to be contracted five hours or more in order to receive it. So ninety percent of Schoolway Cafe employees was never eligible to receive that. So I had been trying to negotiate that for several years to get it down to four hours or more so that they could receive longevity. And so that was the addition, that's what changed in longevity.
Right.
The amount per person did not change. That did not go up. It was just the, how many hours you had to work in order to receive it. Because all these years, mostly Schoolway Cafe has not received it.
So, it, she's correct. That was the eligibility amount? So many more employees qualified for it?
But it was out, it had become out of federal funds.
Based on this agreement. But the amount that we have paid historically, uh, well, from the last contract to this contract stayed the same.
So how much is that? And what are the years? I mean, I'm, I'm just, and I realize that's not in que, Mr. Dorn, is that even, I mean, are we talking about a whole compensation package? Or are we just talking about what is at stake, which is the pay?
Yeah.
The pay. Okay. So we can't even touch longevity. Got it.
But, but as Kathy mentioned, uh, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
The, the change from four to five only affects those in Schoolway Cafe and that comes out of the federal funds.
Correct. But that's not in question today. It's not within our purview. So, um, I, I can't consider that because that's something that you all have already agreed upon. And so that comes to us as such. Um, you've got someone behind you there.
Yeah, Tim.
All right. So we'll keep going. So, neighboring counties, Seminole County did similar to what the gentleman proposed. They did two dollars an hour on their hourly rate. And what it ended up doing was it ended up ranging from seven point eight-seven percent to eighteen percent. Now, for a lot of these folks, and, and mind you, I realize we have mechanics, we have, but as, as I think about all of the different levels, you know, the folks who are driving a bus have a CDL. So if we did thirty percent for our pair of professionals who are not driving a bus, who don't have that certification, and not to mention the risk, I would say, um, although in some cases, there, there's lots of risk for some of our pairs. There's no question about that. So, uh, for Ruben, and I'm one, I don't see it because these folks, whether you're a mechanic, whether you're an air conditioning person right now, the reality is that they can go anywhere right now and work. And I'm not talking about the example of Buc-E's because we all know that Buc-E's pays a hundred dollars an hour. But, I, I get it. I, trust me, I hear Buc-E's, McDonald's, Chick-fil-A, Hobby Lobby. Everybody wants to talk about that.
Don't forget Amazon.
So, my thought, and this is why I said, "Make up your mind," is just what you said. Dollar fifty an hour for everybody. Okay? And that's going to range in percentage because if you're, depending on what you're making, that's going to affect that percentage. And I would argue, and, and this is why I think of this, for a lot of these folks, they're either beyond the minimum wage. For a lot of them, we're going to have to get them anywhere, there anyways. So let's start somewhere. Now, the dollar amount that I had written in my thing was two dollars an hour, but I'm going to take your advice.
I, I confirm.
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, and, and again, these are the folks that represent you. And, and I mean this respectfully. Because I can tell you, this money is not here. I can tell you, there's folks over there right now saying, "What the heck is he doing?" Okay? Because this is just the nature of the beast. Okay? But I want to do right by you guys. I don't know what this is going to cost. I have no idea. I have no idea what this is going to cost. But I value you all and I want to spend the money in people. The district, we could figure out whether we buy buses, don't buy buses, buy this, don't buy that, spend this, don't do that. They'll have to figure out where they're going to get this money from. I have no idea what that's going to cost. But I believe that it's fair. It's exactly what your representation has proposed to us, which is different. And I called it out. I said, "Guy, you asked for fifteen dollars an hour, then you said a dollar fifty. Okay, well, I'll take your dollar fifty." Because again, I have no idea what this is going to cost us. But I can assure you, it's more than the proposed amount that your representation agreed upon before. Because let me remind you, if you were making ten dollars an hour, you were going to get a dollar. Which, we were going to have to get you to that dollar by September of next year anyways. So, what are we talking about? So, that is my proposal. Um, I am one. And I will move to the next speaker, Ms. Cuthbert.
As you all can tell, we're all very torn. Because, um, I think at the heart of, of many of us, um, you mean a great deal to us. Um, I always, every time I pass a bus, I always check to see if I know the bus driver. Um, and, uh, the mechanics, I mean, have been a part of my life for the whole time I've been here. Uh, and it's, it's always heartening to me. Um, and I always feel guilty when I pass a white fleet on the road because they're always driving the speed limit. Um, and the bus drivers are one of the safest people. Whether you're an attendant or a driver, you're one of the safest. Which brings us to very difficult decisions, decisions we don't want to make. We're at the end of the legislative session right now. It's supposed to end Friday. We don't know how much money we're going to be getting. Uh, they're working on the budget right now. We don't know if Volusia County's going to be punished, uh, because we did pass a mask mandate for a little while. Uh, I do know that some of the sponsors are saying that instead of punishing those twelve districts who did that, they're going to reward the other districts who didn't. They will get additional money. So, we, as a board, we have two duties. We have two duties, um, to the taxpayer, to our county, um, to everyone. And that is to be fiscally responsible, as well as to create policy and follow protocol. So, what I was listening to what, um, Mr. Persis said, I think for this year, this twenty-one, twenty-two year, we need to stay the course, what you bargained for. Do we really want that? Probably not. But we also have to be fiscally responsible because that has been budgeted. I would like, however, to add, uh, to extend what Mr. Persis said, is that we have to make you a priority coming June. And I hope the sooner we get to the table, the better. We made a priority, uh, and we have heard you can't spend the same dollar more than once. We made a priority. We made some very tough decisions to prioritize the, that classroom. We need to priator, prioritize, I pardon my pronunciation, what creates and makes that classroom function. And that's our bus drivers, our mechanics, our Schoolway Cafe, all the ones who surround it. And that, and I don't mean to demean view support because they also sup- uh, support the classroom. We are very much aware that we are lacking our surrounding counties. But also, our surrounding counties get a lot more money. I wish we could get the, the extra three and a half cents in the basic student allocation that Seminole County gets. And their tran, and their, their geographical areas half of ours. And it's, it would be much nicer to go half the distance. Um, I always worry about our bus drivers. And I heard the argument last year about the school calendar and driving while it's bus week, uh, bus week, while it's bike week. And it's very difficult. We're all walking on eggshells as well. And I was in the traffic in Port Orange, um, Monday, was it Monday?
Uh-huh.
Monday, uh, and there were two accidents. And I was sitting at the corner of Williamson and Taylor. And I saw the buses on the others, on the south side. I was on the north side of Taylor and I saw the buses on the south side. And I know where they had come from. They'd just come from, uh, Creekside Middle School and nobody was moving because the traffic was backed up and people were trying to make turns and then blocking, blocking the intersections. And I, my heart went out because how much that happens. But I think what we can do is make you all a priority this time. Start right away, as soon as we can, our negotiating team. Um, and that way, we will have the result from the budget in the state legislature, how much can we put forward. Because we, I'm, we're very overextended right now. Um, I do know ESSER funding is coming in, but ESSER funding is only for two or three years. And I most certainly don't want us to be hung up to dry, that within two or three years, we don't know where that income's coming in. I don't know where the direction of the state legislature is going. They're, I, personally, and I don't speak for the board, I think they're a bit crazy right now. They're far beyond their means and their overreach is tremendous. We boards in the state of Florida have the right to govern our own districts. And they keep tying our hands, like, it would be nice to bu, to buy fewer buses. We have in the past to save money. But that's capital funds and we, we can't, we can't switch that for salary. We're not allowed to. I wish we could. And that is the most, most difficult thing that we have before us. We have money in one side and money over here, but the money that we need is right here. And that's what we're fighting for, is money for salaries. So, um, that's where I stand. And I certainly want you all to have the priority for when we negotiate coming up for twenty-two, twenty-three. And hopefully, we can make this up to you.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. Ms. Haynes?
Sorry.
Or excuse me, Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. Um, I reiterate what you all have already said, but you, everybody's sitting here, you represent a, a great amount of employees here at Volusia County Schools and, and you are very important. Um, and there is tough decisions to be made. And I would be interested from our team to see what the dollar fifty an hour total looked like, um, compared to what the proposed, agreed upon, what was looking like as well. Um, just to see what we can do. Because we do need to make people a priority. People are our assets. So, I would be interested.
So, just to clarify and make sure I understand, um, the, what Mr. Cologne was saying was a dollar fifty per hour for each employee on our current salary schedule, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and calculating it out, it looks like about two point six million dollars, okay? Addition. Um, that's in lieu of the one point two six two million that, um, that our proposal originally was.
So it, it would be in addition to, no?
No. The, instead of one point two six two, it would be two point six million.
So an additional million.
So, two hundred million, six hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Haynes?
So actually, Ms. Burnett just asked the question that I was going to ask because I knew that group was over there working on this. So, what was offered was, as you said, one point two six two.
Yes, ma'am.
Taking the current number of employees that are in this bargaining unit and increasing them by a dollar fifty per hour would bring us up to two point six million. So basically, it's a one point four million difference. So it's more than doubling what you had said was your last and final offer.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Persis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we're struggling. I, I get it. I know we are. Uh, but we have a duty, we have a duty to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. We have, we have a duty, when we tell a union that this is our final offer, that, that we're honest. that this is our final offer, that we're honest. We said that, each of us. We communicated that to them, and they took us seriously. What was, what kind of message are we sending now to other unions when we told them this was our final offer? And they took that message back to their members, and they ratified it. Otherwise, in the future, when we say this is our final offer, other unions will look back on this night and say, "Well, let's just declare impasse. Let's go to the boardroom. Let's fill up the gallery with our members, and let's see what the board does." Ladies and gentlemen, we do not want to get into that where we are. What we're doing is negotiating a salary schedule on the fly. That's what we're doing here. We spent months getting to the point where this was our final offer as we weighed the tough decisions with our other unions and members and trying to balance everything out so we're not just emotionally reacting to a group on a given night. We thought very thoroughly about every employee and tried to do what was right by all of them. And when we came up with this one on October the 14th of 2021, we thought long and hard about it. And each one of us was asked, "Are you sure? Is there anything you want to change? Is this our final offer?" And as a group, we said, "Yes, it is." Because at the time, that's the best we could do. I totally agree and support what you said. I think you said was that now that we have our teachers kind of bumped up to the 48.5 or 47.5 now, thank goodness. And that maybe this time around, given that the state knows, as the state knew they had to bump the teacher's salary up, the state also knows we've got to do something with bus drivers. Maybe there'll be a special allocation for pay for bus drivers because it's a statewide issue. I'm hoping so. But I believe right now to, on the fly, just say, "Yeah, we got another $1.55 million. Let's just do it." I think, I think the taxpayers will look at us and say, "You know, what is that board thinking? Come on. We can, we know better. We know better, and we have that responsibility." And we just can't say things, Mr. Chair, like, "I want to give you $1.50, and I don't know how much it's going to cost." We, I know, I know you. I know you wouldn't want to do that, but that's how it came, came out. Like me saying, "I want to give you all a $5 an hour raise. I don't know how much it'll cost, let's just do it." I mean, I can't, we just can't do that. We just can't now. So, I, I think we need, we need, we need to adopt the salary schedule that we said we were going to adopt on October the 14th of 2021. And I hope they would ratify it, and I hope they'd get their retro pay. And I hope we could start negotiations again for the next year, next week. I mean, I am, I am ready to go because I'm very sensitive to what you deserve. And I'm hoping that we can make it a priority as soon as possible.
So, to explain my thought process, again, in my head, I have an idea of what it's going to cost. But because we can't discuss it with the district, I can't drop a number and say I know what it's going to be because legitimately, I couldn't ask Ms. Sneed ahead of time because of the process, what this was going to cost. The job market has changed a lot from October to today. And so, the decisions that we made in October are not relevant to today's job market. They're not relevant to the job market of, I mean, I'm not going to talk about Buc-E's, I promise. But it's truly not. So, my decision to make this, because you know what? Kids are getting to school half an hour late because of this. So, this is twofold. This is how do we get more drivers? Okay? How do we stay competitive so that we can? I mean, kids are getting to school late every day. Okay? It's not uncommon. My community is saying, so I would, my community is saying, "Why aren't the bus drivers getting paid?" My community is saying, "These bus drivers deserve the world. I can't believe they're making what they're making." So, that's what my constituency is saying. And so, the decision we made in October and the decision that we're faced with today, you know, I don't want these folks to go to Seminole County that's going to pay $16.53 an hour. And I live in Deltona, so that's not too far away. Not that I am by any means. But that's the reality. And so, I want my children in Deltona to get to school and have a bus driver because they have the same amount of vacancies we do. These folks have CDLs, they can go on Votran. They could go, they could, I mean, there's places that they could go. And so, for me, it's not where we were then and where we are now is two different worlds. And unfortunately, we're having to make this decision today. And so, it's not in an irresponsible manner of saying. It's saying, "Hey, where are we today? What's going to help keep these folks here? What's going to tell them that we value that they've run these routes?" What, and so, that was my thought process.
I get you, and.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just think the answer to that, and I, I agree with you. It's different today than it was in October. And that's why we, but this year is about over, as you know, school year. And that's why we should start the negotiations so that we could settle this for next year's contract before this year ends. You know what I'm saying? And I would love that so that they would know what their hourly rate would be and salary increase would be.
Thank you. So, I will pass the gavel. I'd like to make a motion that we increase all folks in this bargaining unit to $1, by $1.50 an hour. And that is my motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Cologne to increase everyone that's in the ASME bargaining unit by $1.50 an hour. We have a second by Mrs. Burnett. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Cuthbert.
I think all of our hearts are there. We want to be there. But we don't have the budget yet from the state legislature. We don't know what our income's going to be for this year, this coming year. Where's this money going to come from? I mean, I would love to give it away. I mean, I would love, where is that money going to come from?
Mrs. Sneed.
Hi, thank you for asking that question. Because right now, we, this is definitely way more than we budgeted. And we are waiting for more information. In fact, on the third calculation that came down, we're losing money because the money is going to Florida Empowerment Scholarship. So, there is a reason that there's a process and that we have to be able to put all of the numbers and model it out to see how it impacts us. So, I would just ask that if you make this decision, you allow leniency for the financial condition ratio because I can't tell you tonight that I can meet the benchmarks you're giving me if you're changing the numbers by double. And I would, you know, we are getting close to the end of the fiscal year. So, we're going to be looking at the third quarter. We're going to have more information from the state soon, you know? And we're in a, I mean, I need time to actually work on the budget, not just work on bargaining because I need to be able to model things and see what the impacts really are and make sure that we stay in the financial condition that you want us to be in and that the state requires us to be in.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sneed. This is what we have to think of. We have our end of the school year, fiscal year is June 30th. Okay, we don't know what our state legislature is going to do to us, what our BSA is. This has already been, the money that we had for the contract has already been budgeted. To add another $1.4 million onto that after we just did the non-bargaining, we have to be fiscally responsible. It doesn't come out of the thin air. It has to be on a spreadsheet. And as much as we, we want to do this, this is what's very difficult. And I think the district wants to do the same thing, which is why I said, "Let's start negotiations if at all possible." And I know there are a lot of job fairs coming up. There's transfer fairs coming up. There's a lot of work for HR to do. So, it would be nice if, if the union could start talking with our negotiating team to start setting up dates now. And so, we know what's coming up ahead of time so we, so Ms. Sneed has time to create how much money we would have available so we can say, "We have this much money available. We can do this. You're our priority. We have board direction that is the priority this time." We have to do that. But we also want to be able to pay that same raise next year and the year after, and the year after that. It has to be stable and sustainable. You depend upon that paycheck. They haven't bounced. And I think they, they could. We're going to be in a financial, our, what do you call it? The unencumbered, what is it, the fiscal?
The financial condition ratio.
Well, the financial condition ratio, but what is it when you, unfunded balance? Yeah, the unfunded balance is going to take a nosedive. So, because you're going to have to budget, and who knows how much other stuff that is going to be increasing when it comes to FRS. And, and, you know, it's just, there are too many variables that could put us in jeopardy. That's, you know, so we're talking, I, I'm sorry, I'm the one that has to say this. I have to be, I have to look at the numbers. I've always been a numbers person, but we have to look at our budget. We can't go over, it's going to hurt the district in the long run. But please, let's get started on this priority as soon as possible, as soon as we can. If you can start your talks, like, just say, "We're going to meet May 1st, May 15th." We can get this ball rolling. It'll give her time to get our budget set up. We will know how much money we're going to have allocated to our school district. That way, we can be sure and say, "It may be $2.50 an hour, not $1.50 an hour." And that way, we know we will have the money, and we can start, you ratify it, and maybe the pay can start July 1st. Wouldn't that be nice?
Excuse me, thank you.
But that new increase could start that early.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay.
No.
The motion passes three to two.
Thank you.
The meeting is adjourned.